All right. I don't have a gavel, so I'm opening up the city council workshop. And the first on that is the oath of offices. So if you want to do that.
Yeah, so I was just gonna do one by one, and I'll start with a counselor, so if that's okay.
That's fine, yeah.
Okay, so Charity, do you want to go first?
She's frozen.
Okay, let's, can't see and hear you, so. Let's do Joel first.
Alright, okay.
Okay, so Joel, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Joel Lickie.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitution and laws.
Support the constitution and laws.
Of the United States and the state of Oregon.
Of the United States and the state of Oregon.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Estacada.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Estacada.
And will well and truly perform the duties.
And will well and truly perform the duties.
Of the office of city councillor to the best of my ability.
Of the office of city councillor to the best of my ability.
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, Charity, do, are you ready? Yep, okay. So if you can raise your right hand, I state your name. I, Charity Hughes. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the constitution and laws. That I will support the constitution and laws. That I will support the constitution and. Of the United States and the state of Oregon. Of the United States and state of Oregon. And the charter, excuse me, and the charter and ordinances of the city of Estacada. And the charter and ordinances of the city of Estacada. And will well and truly perform the duties. And will well and truly perform the duties. Of the office of city councillor to the best of my ability. Of the office of city councillor to the best of my ability. Great, thank you.
Alright.
Okay, Paul.
I'm ready.
Okay, if you can raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Paul Strubel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitution and laws.
And I will support the constitution and laws.
Of the United States and the state of Oregon.
Of the United States and the state of Oregon.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Estacada.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Estacada.
And will well and truly perform the duties.
And will well and truly perform the duties.
Of the office of city councillor to the best of my ability.
Of the office of the city councillor to the best of my abilities.
Great. Okay, mayor, drink wine.
Yes.
Okay, if you can raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Sean Drakeone.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitution and laws.
Support the constitution and laws.
Of the United States and the state of Oregon.
The United States and the state of Oregon.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Estacada.
The charter and ordinance of the city of Estacada.
And will well and truly perform the duties.
Well and truly perform the duties.
Of the office of mayor to the best of my ability.
The office of mayor to the best of my ability. Thank you. Okay. Now, I guess we'll move right into discussion and topics, and I want to congratulate all of you for being a part of the city council. You are in for it now. We've got a lot ahead of us, so we got to get started. There's a lot on the agenda this year, starting with this meeting that we've got to go through so we can get everything in line and get started. So, starting that, the first on it is some special election type things that were brought up by Joel Lickie. Now, Joel, did you want to speak on this or put it forward?
Yeah, so there's a few things that I put on there. The first one was, I've done a lot of research in the area and I found that it's about roughly about fifty fifty percent of the cities in the area have a four-year term for mayor, so it's not uncommon. And I felt that it was a good thing to put out there for the people to have a special election and make a decision on it so that they can give the mayor position an option to have the same term as a councillor, because it's hard to run for a position every two years. So, to try to kind of make that equal along with the councillors, to figure it's something we can put on the special election, so.
Okay, so that is the discussion on that particular item. I don't know, you, Jerry, Justin, I know we've been down this road before, Jerry and Justin, you've been here for that. I wasn't.
I don't think Jerry was. I don't mean to interrupt.
Oh, I thought he was.
I don't, I don't think that Jerry was, because he and I would have been at the same time. That being said, I want to throw one good point in with what Joel was saying. One of the best pieces of advice that I got from anybody on my first night was actually from the former president to this council, Aaron Gant. And he told me that, when, on my first day as a councillor, he told me that what I was doing was a marathon and not a sprint to practice patience, because I should not expect changes overnight and government is, you know, it's its own beast and that beast needs to be tackled and fought sometimes. And so that being said, he was absolutely right. I know that it's taken me two years to try to accomplish things that I started on day one, and I can tell you that to be really effective, you really have to have those four years, because it really is a marathon and not a sprint. And really, by keeping the two-year term, we're more implying that it's that sprint when it isn't. So, I would support a four-year term for those reasons alone and my own experiences as well.
Thank you, Katie. Justin or Jerry, do you want to speak on that? No, either?
No, I'm good. I don't, I don't have anything to add.
Okay, Paul, would you like to speak on that?
Just to check in on this, what we're looking to do, what you're proposing, Joel, is to get this added to, put it in front of the voters, is that right?
Yeah, a special election, so, and there's some other things we'll talk about that would also go into that, so it wouldn't be by itself, you know, grouping together.
When does the next special election come up?
It's whenever we schedule it, so.
They have an election date set. I think the next one is March. You have to pay for special elections and you don't pay for, and I think it might say somewhere in our charter that changes might be limited to May and November, but I'm not sure about that. The May and November elections, you don't have to pay for, because those are elections that have to be held. Any election other than that, which would be the first one, I think is in March.
Yeah.
You have to pay for the mailings, the voters pamphlet and everything like that. They get quite spendy, so I think that I can get some costs and we can get this out for discussion as a as a council item, if that's what the council wants to proceed with. It's also a charter change, and there's certain, you know, a charter change isn't a simple change, and usually you open that up to public meetings and you have an advisory committee. Anytime there's a charter change, I don't know if you guys just want to skip that and do this without that or what, to change that procedure. So, we can put this on the agenda at your next council meeting.
Denise, I have a couple of questions, just for clarification. So, we would have to pay money if we were a part of the special election in, say, March. What if we were patient and just waited until the normal election cycle, either in May or November, would we have to pay then?
No, you don't pay for the May and November elections, because they have to hold those. There's usually always something on those.
And that's, that'd be May of this year, correct, just to make sure.
May of twenty twenty-one, yes.
Okay, cool. I don't see why I'd pay for an extra two months.
Yeah, yeah.
And then my next question, and Jerry, then I'll let you go, because I know that you've got a question. So, would the two processes for changing the city charter be different if we put the question to the ballot versus if we just followed the procedures that you were starting to mention?
No, just whenever we've had a charter change in the past, we have formed a committee to review it. But if you're just, we've never just done a one item like this. So, if you're just doing that, I don't see a reason why. It's not like you want to dig in, delve into the whole charter. You just want to change this one part of it. So, it really doesn't, but I think, you know, we, if we're going to talk about it this early, it will, it'll give the community a chance to comment on it. So, I think that that's good enough.
Okay, thank you.
Jerry? Okay, so my question on this, would it, would this go into effect? So, if this went to the voters and it passed, would this go into effect for this current term or would it go into effect for the next?
No, it would be the next election that we were electing a mayor.
Okay.
Okay, so we have plenty of time for that portion of this. We have, you know, we have two years to get that one in, so, yeah, I wouldn't definitely not pay for it to happen right away.
Yeah, yeah, I know that. I think it's smart to do a May or November election.
Yeah. Charity, did you have anything to say on that?
Um, I like the idea of opening, putting this on the agenda and opening, opening it up for community comments. It would be nice to see, just get an idea, just a sort of general idea. What our constituents would say if they prefer a two or a four-year term, but I'm not opposed to, to the idea. I think this should be something left for the voters to decide, so.
Good, good. All right, are there any more questions on this particular item? No? Okay, the next item on there was an ordinance against nudity in Estacada. And Joel, since you put it on there, I'll let you explain what you mean by that.
Yeah. No, I'll just give a quick explanation what it is and then I'll find if I can pull something up. But basically, the state ordinance is pretty limited on its description of what indecent exposure is, and the state, not pretty much limited to if there's a sexual act or an intent to try to cause a sexual arousal on somebody, that's pretty much how they limit it there. But that doesn't mean that you can't, it doesn't limit people from pretty much walking around without clothes on in the city. And as you know, there was an incident last year around summertime where we had a lady that was cleaning herself in the city fountain. And so, by putting an ordinance in place that basically requires anyone into the city limits to have clothing on, covering their, you know, regions. That would hopefully put a stop to any of those issues and give law enforcement something to use to, you know, enforce people not walking around, doing things like that, so.
Okay.
Portland does have an ordinance that they use that pretty much covers it, and so it'd be a good example to take a look at. So, I can.
Yeah, and we did include that in the packet, the Portland and the state one. The state one, we have already adopted for our code. The, we put the Portland one in the packet for you guys to take a look at.
Yeah, basically, the Portland one reads, it's, it is unlawful for any person to expose his or her genitalia while in public place or in place visible from a public place, if the public place is open or available to persons of the opposite sex. So, I think it'd be a good, a good kind of template for us to kind of go after, so.
So, how does ours currently read?
It's the same as the state, the state statute, but I can read it for you.
I can scroll down if she added it into this thing.
Yeah, it's right there, so.
Okay.
If the council wants to move forward with that, we can prepare an ordinance and bring it to you at a future meeting.
Does that sound like something the council would be interested in? I'd like to hear from the council. I would like the, you know, in the Portland one, it doesn't actually say in the, in the ordinance itself that you can't wash yourself, you know, or wash your genitals. So, if there, if we could put some kind of wording, I don't know how to do that correctly. Somebody smarter than me is going to have to figure that one out. But it doesn't actually say that it's against the law to wash yourself in public.
Well, I think it says, play it public, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was really confused when I saw this page first, the first time too. There are two different ordinances on the page that's included in our packet. The Portland code is just that tiny little paragraph at the top. It does say expose his or her genitalia. To be honest with you, if someone wearing full, you know, clothes jumped into our fountain, we probably wouldn't have gotten as many phone calls as we did. The fact that she was exposing her genitalia is why we got as many phone calls as we did. If we said you just cannot show your genitalia in public, whether you're bathing yourself or you're peeing or you're just walking around, I think that would well envelop it into bathing of your genitalia. If you're bathing with clothes on, yeah, that's a different story, but if you're bathing in the public fountain and showing genitalia, I think that's where, that's a good place to draw the line.
Yeah, I didn't realize that it was to, that the Portland code was just the top section and then the rest was state, so that's my, my bad.
Yeah, I was confused when I saw it the first time. I didn't realize that the Portland code was even included until she just said it, and then I realized, oh, that's because ORS takes up the big part of the page. And the Portland code is just that tiny little paragraph that I didn't even see the first time, so.
Yeah, so, that I'm way, way cool with how it's read, how it's written there, so, if that's the ordinance.
All right, Paul, yeah, go ahead. I'm on board as well, too. It's a lot simpler and pretty to the point as well, too, so I'm good with it.
Okay.
I'm good with it also.
All right, so it sounds like, yeah, go ahead and bring it in a future meeting, the way it'll lay out, and we'll go from that point on that particular one. The next one is an ordinance regarding possession, use and sale of drugs, excluding marijuana.
Yes, so basically, since the state law passed recently, which it kind of decriminalized a lot of the more common use drugs like meth and heroin and those kind of harder drugs. There's been, I've been, had a lot of people come to me and ask me to bring something up in the city council to try to, you know, count that in our city limits, because they, they're concerned about that might lead to, generally those type of things lead to theft and other issues, so. I went through and I took a look at what the federal drug state statutes are, and also I found something here that's been included that also talks about Washington laws, and I figured this is a really good starting point to kind of take a look at what they have established to consider something that we can build for what we can put here in Estacada. At least, basically, something we put together that the voters can take a look at for an ordinance that kind of restricts the use of, you know, cocaine, heroin, things like that, having possession of it, selling it, and kind of bringing that extra protection back into our city limits, so.
Okay, Jerry, go ahead. Joel, did, I didn't look to see what the voter breakdown was, but have you, did you look and see what the voter breakdown was on that? That law in Clackamas County? I know we can't look at, well, I mean, maybe we can look at it, no, it's probably just Clackamas County.
Yeah, I didn't see what the voter breakdown was in Clackamas County. I saw what the state breakdown was, and it looked like there was a, about a sixty, sixty forty split roughly. I don't remember the exact numbers, so. And I've never seen, those are kind of shortly after the election happened, so I think there might still have been counting, but it was like a sixty forty.
I personally voted against the decriminalizing the drugs, but I, I would really, I would, I would hold back on going against what the, you know, not knowing what Clackamas County voted, how the votes fell in Clackamas County. If the, if Clackamas County voted against it, then, then I'm for moving forward with this, but I, I wouldn't be so quick to go against, you know, just something that was recently voted in without giving them a chance to make that system work. But again, I mean, if we, if we decided to move forward with it, like I said, I voted against it, so.
I think we were talking about during the election in May, so that'd get five months into it, and then it would be pushed up to the voters here in the city, what they would like to do anyways, so. I think it's, it's bringing it back to letting it be a local, a local.
Or just don't go to the vote of the people.
That comes back to us, so. Is there a way we can get some information about the county's decision and where they went with this, Clackamas?
Yeah, well, so, was it one oh nine or one ten? Does anyone remember? Because I've got the, I've got the election right up, and actually, it doesn't even matter. It was, Clackamas County, as a county, voted yes on both, as a county.
Okay.
Okay.
It would be, saying if we could contact the elections office and see if the, see if the county election office would release the Estacada only results to us, if that's possible.
That's definitely a good idea. So, so just to confirm, so because I'm obviously got a lot to learn here. So, an ordinance in the city that can't go to the vote of the people in the city of Estacada, that has to be decided solely by us? Okay.
Okay, so I'm taking it that we're, we've got time, so we can probably bring, is everybody off?
Paul, no, Paul has a question.
Oh, Paul, go ahead, sorry.
So, are, what are we looking at here? Are we looking at having stricter laws than what the state is allowing? And how does this line up with what the county is doing too? I would, I would want to hear from Clackamas County as well. They would be the ones enforcing this if we were to have different laws within the city limits of Estacada versus the rest of the county as well, too. I mean, you cross, outside of the city limits, and you'd have a different guideline than what the rest of the county does. Is this in line with what other cities are doing within Clackamas County? I, I need a lot more.
I think we would be the early pioneers of that fall, because it just passed, and so I don't think other cities have had a time to react to it anymore than we would. But it would be no different than having a indecent exposure law, meaning that if inside the city, you can't walk around and you expose your genitalia, but you, many you leave, you can. So, it's not going to be any different than enforcing a city ordinance than it would be enforcing a state ordinance or a state statute, so.
Well, and I can tell you based on conversations I've had with the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office, back when I was having conversations with them regarding dog leash ordinances in our city, they will only enforce what is in our ordinance. What's in our ordinance, for example, right now, is that the leash laws in our city revert back to the county. So, they will always use the county ordinances when deciding whether or not to, you know, find someone for not having their dog on a leash. That being said, if we as a city were to adopt our own ordinance, then they would enforce our city's ordinance only within the city limits. At least, that's how it was explained to me back when I was having conversations with them about leash laws. So, I would imagine that if we adopted some sort of a, in public indecency or an indecent exposure law or ordinance or whatever it be, and then also with the drug use, I mean, I don't know what the drug use one would look like, whether it be possession or just use of or, or what, that would be a really hard one for us to determine, where do we draw that line? Especially if we're going to be pioneering something like this. But that being said, whatever we do adopt, the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office is our sheriff's office, and they're tasked with enforcing our ordinances. So, whatever we adopt is what essentially they're supposed to uphold.
Well said. Joel?
I gotta get in the habit of raising my hand and taking my turn, so bear with me on that. So, I did, since I didn't know that didn't go to the, to the vote of the people, I think it'd be a really good idea to set some sort of period of time where we can hear from the citizens in Estacada, what they think about it, and see if it's worth pursuing or something. You know, what do you guys think?
Anybody? How do you feel about that?
Want to do that in a town hall setting? Would you want to do it as like a public hearing on an agenda? How would you want to go about talking to the people about it? Do you want there to be an internet survey? I mean, there's plenty of ways to talk to the people and get their reactions, but the question is, who are you trying to reach?
I think we'd, sorry, my turn. I, I think it would go to as many people as possible, so whatever, I mean, I'm the new kid on the block, so, you know, tell me what's, what's been the most effective to get the best input from people in the city, you know, see what they actually feel, especially once we also get those results from the, from the county, seeing what, how Estacada voted.
Well, I think Denise, I'm going to ask you, what's the best route for us to get this out to the people as far as whether we should pursue or not to pursue?
Well, once we have exactly what we want to get out there, because I still am not clear on everything that you guys want to add to the, I think a survey is good. We've had some good luck with those, especially in the times right now that you don't really get together as people. But then we could follow that up with, we could place it on the agenda, but people have been attending the council meetings and able to talk. We can get it in the paper that we're gonna, maybe after the survey, then we can have a council agenda item where people could, when you are discussing the survey results, and then more people could talk at that time, too, and we could get that in the paper that we were going to have that. And it could be a couple. I mean, this, you know, we could, we could, I think the, if you give it a couple months and hear it a couple times, more people will get the clue that you guys are talking about it.
That makes sense. Joel, go ahead.
Would it be good to, when we put it out in the paper, would it be a good idea to also maybe have something preliminary, kind of an idea of what we want to have written up of the, of what the ordinance might look like, to put that out in the paper along with it, so people kind of get a better idea where we're going with it? And maybe even if we can get the election results kind of released out as well, to kind of, you know, inform them of what they're looking at.
Yeah, I think that the first step is for the council to let staff know exactly what we're talking about, so we can put a survey together and then create an ordinance from that, and that's what would be discussed and distributed.
Okay.
Fair enough, fair enough. We have a retreat coming up, too, Denise, is that right? How soon is that coming? I mean, what?
I was going to ask you guys in council business today if you had, on my email I sent to you guys this weekend, I said the twenty-fourth would be a good date. We've usually been having it on a Sunday after church time. And next Sunday is a three-day weekend. I don't know if people make plans or not, but we usually try to stay away from those, so it would be the next Sunday. So, if that's okay with all the councillors, we could just go ahead and set that for the twenty-fourth, but if someone's going to be out of town or.
Okay.
I, I think I got a workshop scheduled for something else already that day, so I don't know if I work out with my schedule. And it's a workshop scheduled with multiple other people, so it'd be kind of hard to rearrange it for them as well.
So, let's, the next one would be January thirty-first. We could do it on that Sunday afternoon.
How does everybody feel about that?
I gotta look at my calendar.
Okay, good.
I mean, you don't have to let me know tonight. If you could let me know soon if that date's going to work for you, that would be awesome.
Okay, all right. You heard what she said, so we'll try to get back to Denise and let her know as soon as possible, so she can get this scheduled.
Oh.
We'll just put this off until then. Go ahead, Katie.
Sorry, mayor, I didn't want to get too far away from the conversation we were just having about that survey, because I know Denise is probably looking for some direction as to what we're wanting as well. I guess when we're talking about a survey versus a vote or, you know, a ballot, I, I like to think of surveys as a little bit more open-ended, you know, on a scale of one to ten, how concerned are you about the drug use in Estacada? On a scale of one to ten, how concerned are you about heroin specifically or cocaine specifically, or, you know, really kind of narrow down where people in Estacada particularly are concerned about the drugs? Which drugs in particular are they most concerned about? Where do we feel like the line needs to be drawn for our citizens? Is it possession? Is it public use? Is it being, you know, kids around it or whatever it be? I want to know where the citizens are most concerned. And then that way, when we go to propose an ordinance, that we're really drawing that line at the most concerning point. Because, I mean, when it comes to the drug use, we're not going to, we're not going to win the drug war, you guys. I, I'm sorry, we're not going to win the drug war. I did vote against the ordinance, just I don't want, I want everyone to know, I did not want legal drug use. But what I will say is that we're not going to win the war on drugs, so what we have to be able to do is prioritize where we limit our community to it, or where we can enforce it at least, where we can reasonably enforce it, because if we think that we can arrest everybody who's going to be caught around the corner with a little bit of meth in his pocket, it's probably, it's not going to work. So, I really think that getting a better idea as to where the concerns really are, where the citizens are in that concern is going to be helpful when we go to draft any potential ordinances if we're looking at that.
And, and we'll have to have the attorney look at this, because we don't hold court for anything but minor infractions here. So, I don't know what the consequences are. If we create a felony in our, in our code, how does Clackamas County, do we have to pay when that goes? How does Clackamas County, do we have to pay when that goes to court? I, I, you know, are we the, uh, prosecute? I don't know how that works. Cause we've never really had, uh, a felony in our code that wasn't a state code or a, or a county code. So I, I will also have to figure out when we get going on this, how does that all work? So.
That's good questions. Boy, there's a lot to it. Um. We definitely got to look into that. So let's just, uh, put that off, give us some time to get the information and give you time to research it a little bit.
Yeah, we'll start working on it.
Yeah, we appreciate that. Thank you. Um, so I'm going to move on to the next one unless anybody wants to discuss this more. Um, no hands. Okay. So the next one on your list is proclamation standing behind and supporting Estacada businesses.
Um, yeah, and so. This is something where I think it'd be a good position being that there's been, um, a lot of hurt in the town, but a lot of people asking. Where, where does the city stand? What, where are we at? What can we do for them? And I think a proclamation to kind of openly state. Worried position that saying that we stand behind our businesses, you know, and to, to what extent that we, we support them and, you know. Kind of letting know the city stands that we're not just kind of sitting here silently, you know, uh, by ourselves and, um, you know, clarifying. Kind of the position that we have, I think is what the pro, the proclamation was, I'm trying to get to focus on. And, you know, I kind of wanted to see what the council together for that.
Well, counsel, how do you feel about that? Anybody you want to start it off?
Katie.
Not seen any hands.
No.
All right, Denise, what, oh, go ahead, Jerry.
So I'm all for standing behind the businesses. Um, I want them open. I want them doing business. Um. I'm also for, I want to stand behind the safety of the people that put us here. Um, so if the business is open and they're, um, following all the guidelines and all, all. And it's completely safe for the, you know, the citizens of Estacada, not just the people that, that, that are shopping at the open businesses. Cause there's a lot of people that won't go to a business, open or not, um, at this, at this point in time. But, um, it's got to be safe for the people that come in contact with those people that are shopping in the open businesses. So. Um, you know, thriftways out or harvest market, I have to get used to that, um, is open. Um, you know, and somebody that goes into a, a store that's not enforcing COVID precautions. If somebody is not enforcing them and they, and a shopper goes in and they're not masked and. Something that, you know, they get. Something happens and then they go to thriftway where they do enforce it, but yet there's still, you know, contamination. Um, you know, like I said, it's, I'm for the businesses being open, but all the. Um, we, there has to be enforcement of the, uh, guidelines and. You know, to keep everybody else safe, because it's not just about that individual business that they're going into that's being open. It's about all the other businesses that are doing it right, that are doing it correctly. Um, not saying that those businesses aren't going to do it correctly, but everybody has to. You know, I'd be for, you know, a proclamation standing behind the business, but first and foremost, we have to stand behind the safety of our constituents, the people that put us here. So that's all I got.
Well said.
Yeah. Anybody else want to speak on that? Uh, Paul?
I'm, I'm all for, uh, stating that we support the businesses. I guess from my standpoint, though, as a small business owner, I. I, I, I don't know what we would be looking to accomplish. Um, I, I've not felt like there's been any, uh, lack of support. Um, from my end, I mean, with whatever power the city has to do to support us. Um, so I, I guess I would. As, as a small business owner, if I saw the city was, that we were issued a proclamation, honestly, it would be kind of a shrug from my end. Um, because I've, I've kind of felt. That, that, you know, whatever can be done is being done so far, you know, that, that there's nothing been, uh. A-against the small businesses within Estacada from the city of Estacada.
Okay. Fair enough. Uh, Joel?
Um, and so I actually agree with, uh, Jerry when it comes down to, yes, we definitely put in the proclamation that we encourage them to open safely. Um, to be, to be safe. I think it's the right word to look for, to be safe. And then we want them to be successful and we know they're going through a hard time and that. The proclamation would be to say, hey, you know, um, if you're opening, do things safe. Um, we're, we're standing behind you. We know you're struggling and we're doing everything we can. Just know that when, you know, and I, they're obviously going to word this in a much better way, but, um. There would be to basically let them know that, hey, we're, we're not asleep at the wheel for those who, and while Paul may not have the concern. There have been business owners that have, that have said to me, you know, what's the city doing? Where, where are they? You know, did, are they, did they even pay attention? You know, they don't, they don't come into city hall. You know, what, what's, you know, what's going on? And so the proclamation we would be to say, hey, and we can even talk about in that proclamation, some of the things that we've done. To already to try to show the support there, just something to let the, the, the businesses know and the citizens know that. We're not asleep behind the wheel, that we do care and that we are there and we are trying to do the best we can to support them and, and stuff. So, and that they're not alone.
Okay. Anybody else wish to comment on that?
Yeah, um, I mean, I'll just say that I, I mean, I support the, um, the, the businesses owning or opening. Um, I mean, they're private business owners and I, you know, I've had some emails from some. Just concerned citizens already and, uh, restaurant owners and I know they're just. I think they're just looking for support from city council and from, um, and from the mayor as well, like. They know that's their own business and they know that if they get fined, that's on them. But I think it's nice for them to know that if we as. City council say, you know what? We support you opening. It's your business. We have confidence that you're going to do it safely. Um, at least from the people I've heard, they swear they're going to do it safely and I've seen it. Um, and so I think they just need that reassurance. I'm for the, the proclamation. Um, and again, like what Joel had said, we can, we can put it in there, um, you know, more specifics as to. What guidelines, you know, they need to follow, you know, they need to follow the COVID guidelines or whatever. And we can get. Look into that a little bit further, but, um. I think people just want to know, especially right now that the city council stands behind them if, and that they do. If they do decide to open. And again, that's on them as a, as a business owner. That's totally on them if they want to open or not. If they don't, I'm fine with that too. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Jerry. Uh, Jerry.
So, uh, what are we talking about businesses opening up further than they already are? Cause. I mean, uh, from what I understand, there's only one business in Estacada that hasn't opened to some extent. Uh, maybe two. I'm not sure if the dance studio is open or not, but, uh, I know that the Timber Town Fitness is not open. Are there other businesses that are not open? Or are we talking about open up further than they already are?
That's a good question. Anybody want to speak on that? Uh, Joel?
Um, so yeah, I think it would be to the, to the level that they choose as a private business owner. But of course, taking COVID safety and to precaution of it. Um, I think a primary business that comes to mind on this would be, uh, restaurants have been the biggest one. I think it's. Been on everybody's tongue lately is, is the restaurants. And while, yes, they are, um, open. Um, a lot of them are still not making the daily need that they have to keep people working and to keep themselves going. So. Um, it's, it would be in, in some cases, I'm not saying that we, we can't say that they can, what they can and can't do. We need to encourage them to follow all the COVID guidelines. But I mean, the, it's up to them what they want to do. I think it's kind of what charity was going with that as well. So.
All right. Um, anybody else which to speak on?
Sure. I, I'm, I'd like to say something. And I'm going to try really hard to be kind of calm about this. First of all, everybody knows here that my, my own mother is a restaurant owner in Estacada. I'm very close to the situation. I really am. And I'm very sympathetic. I hope everyone knows that. I also have a first grader who hasn't been in school for a year. She is struggling learning to learn, to read. Online, it's hard. Um. I have a preschooler who's going to miss her second year of preschool because of this. I am sorry that everybody is struggling. Everybody is struggling. Everybody is struggling. Instead of encouraging people. To defy public health advisors. Instead of encouraging everyone to just go back to business as normal. Business is not normal for anyone and it won't be. I'm a landlord. Ask me about all of my tenants who can't pay rent. What I can say is this though, is that there are actually resources out there. Resources that people have been taking advantage of. And if you want me to provide a list of every business owner in Estacada who has received money from the. The payment, uh, or the paycheck protection program, the forgivable loan, the one hundred percent forgivable loan. I can provide a list of a hundred and twenty five businesses in Estacada who have received money from that loan and that loan just reopened up today too. There are programs out there specifically for rental assistance. Rental assistance for business owners as well as residential. If you are struggling, it is because you are not taking advantage of the resources that are out there. And if we as a government are not doing enough, it is because we have not been asking the right questions. What tools do you need to come back when it is safe for you to do so? I am sorry, it's not safe for anyone to do so right now. I see what's happening in California. I have friends with medical degrees that are being shipped over to New York and. Uh, uh, places out of state. Because they are desperately needed. I'm so glad that we have a vaccine that people are going to start receiving. But we're not done. And defying the public health advisory is not being helpful to anyone. And because people are out there defying it, we're seeing these spikes. Oregon has done a very good job so far compared to other states in our nation. Don't take that away from us now by opening too soon. I want my kids to go back to school. I want my first grader to learn how to read. I will not agree to any proclamation. That encourages businesses to risk the tools that they're going to need to be successful when they come back from all of this. When we are done with this pandemic, I want them to come back. I want them to come back so hard and succeed. But they can't succeed if they don't have their oil CC license. They can't succeed if they don't have their lottery license. They don't, they can't succeed if they're facing hundred thousand dollar fines from their government because they defied their government. We can't encourage business owners to risk the tools that are necessary to succeed later on, right now to put those on the line. Simply because we are not doing enough to help them. Well, then how can we help you? I'm sorry, we can't. We can't just say business as usual. But how can we help you? Money? Great. There's money out there. Where do you need it? Do you need help finding it? Do we have, do we need to have someone in our staff help the small business owner that can't? Learn how to apply for the PPP to help them apply for the PPP? Would that be helpful in our small town? Is that what the tools that are necessary? Are, are those necessary? There are resources. Use them, please. Follow the public health advisory for your mom, for your grandma, for your kids who are out of school. That is all I have to say about that. Thank you for the soapbox. I appreciate everybody.
All right. Katie, I, Katie, I really appreciate your statement. Um, knowing that you feel that way means the world to me. Um, you know, I just want, want you to say, I appreciate that. That was a, that was amazing. So thank you.
I just sent everyone the link that shows everyone in Estacada that received the PPP funds. Um, in the first round, the second round did open today for businesses that have never applied for them before. And I think on Wednesday, the people that have received them can apply again. And so that link will take you, I, I have it set up. So it takes you right to the nine seven oh two three businesses that received. And there's a lot of them and there's a lot of money that all of them received. So. It, it was kind of eye opening. So you guys can take a look at that. And, um. I can't think of it now.
All right. Joel, one more time. Let's, uh, kind of speed this up a little bit because we've got a lot to go through.
Yep, I'll do my best. Um, and I've, I've seen the, the, these numbers before. Um, and so I, I do know where the money's there and. My main focus and while I know that some business owners are struggling, my main focus is the people that work for those businesses. And then a lot of them aren't getting replacement income. And I, I've seen that firsthand on people. So that's my main concern. Um, and while we can make it to proclamation that says we stand behind the businesses. And for them to open safely, something that's for the business owners, but. Them opening or them doing something to get their people back to work is what my main goal is. And whatever we did. They're done, so.
Joel, with all respect, with all due respect, all of these businesses are open and they are offering food. And drink to go or dining outside. And really, if people wanted to eat restaurant food or drink a cocktail. They could do so right now. The only thing they can't do right now is play the lottery. And, and I'm sorry, dining inside, but these businesses are still opening. One of the reasons people are not going out is because they're one afraid and two, a lot of them are broke too. Did you know that the auto industry is struggling too? Did you know that the housing industry is struggling too? Every industry is struggling. Especially if you look at that list of businesses that receive money from the PPP, literally every industry is struggling. Literally every person in America is struggling. And one of the first things that you give up when you're, when you're a struggling household is eating out. Okay, these businesses are struggling for a multitude of reasons. And them not being able to have people sitting at the tables inside their establishment is just one factor. One factor, we will not be able to save these businesses just by saving that one factor. So we need to be able to offer them other tools to, to help them succeed. And especially to a point where they can open up safely and get things back like their lottery, which for a lot of, which for a lot of. Restaurants and bars in particular, lottery is the bread and butter. And without that lottery machine being turned on, what is the point of their door being open and exposing all those people? So we could go on for days and days and days about this.
Guys, hold on, hold on. I get it. I get it. I think we all get it. Uh, the passion is there definitely on both sides. So we'll just, uh, you know, put this off. Uh, is this something we want to bring to the next? Just get a majority. Uh, consensus here that says, are we going to bring this back when we, we talk about the other stuff? Or is this something we just? Say no, or we're not even gonna, we're not even going to entertain.
Well, and again, I think that we're okay just supporting this as separate people too. I don't think that we have to bring this to the city.
It doesn't have to be something from there, but I think people will see that we're at least talking about it here. You know, this would be a good place for one of them surveys to see, ask the businesses what they need. Put a survey together or something like that to see.
Can I try to add one thing? Cause I haven't got to speak on this at all.
Yeah.
And I, and I greatly appreciate what you're, what everybody's saying. Katie, you too, you sound very passionate about this. And I loved everything that you've said and added to this. And I, I actually have not looked at this list, which I'm looking at right now on the iPad. The one thing that concerns me and that's hard for me to choke is the fact that. Large corporations are open and I've been in Costco's, I've been in Walmarts, I've been in Home Depots. They are packed. It's, somebody's making money here. And I know you're saying everybody's struggling, but. There's some people who are making some huge money here. And to take it away from the businesses like that and not even give them an option, there has to be a better way. And that's, that's kind of just what I think and, and, and I could be wrong. I'm not. You know, I'm not a freaking scientist. I'm not a genius. I'm not any of that stuff. But when I see these Costcos and these Home Depots. Packed full of people and then we're pumping these stimulus checks in, you know, I, I. I should go to Walmart's site because I bet you they have a TV on sale for five ninety-nine, right? Everybody got six hundred bucks. Let's do a TV for five ninety-nine and see how much money we can get. I mean, it's going somewhere and it's, it's sad to see. So I, I guess, you know, I think it needs to be safe. Obviously I don't want people dying. There's, there's no way. I would never encourage that. But there's got to be a way for them to make some more money, even though these numbers are pretty high. I, I see them. I mean, some of them really got some good money here. Um, and I'd like to look at this list and study it more, but that, that was just my two cents.
Um, Justin. Out, out of curiosity, when you, when you go to Home Depot, are you licking the, the saw before you hand it to the cashier?
I don't think COVID has anything to do with distance from what I've heard.
I'd have to go on that one. I don't think people lick their plates.
Yeah, I don't.
They do lick their silverware. That's where the silverware literally goes. And then back to the.
Okay, I just wanted to give my two cents. I didn't anything, Katie. I didn't.
And I think we're just going to kind of put this aside. We can take it up with our personal views and deal with it that way. I think that's the best.
I think that's the best way.
I just say if you know a business that needs help, Matt is here to help them. And also P Bank or US Bank is one of the people that processes the PPP. So go. So go, our local US bank is here to people, even if you don't have an account with them. So either there or call Matt if you got, if, let businesses know they can call those people to help them through this process of getting some funding.
Okay, thank you Denise. All right, so I'm gonna move on from this subject. And we will go to the Estacada Emergency Operations Plan Review. And I think all of you have had a look at that. Are there questions?
Well, this is something that is gonna take a workshop or a number of workshops. We distributed so you guys could start to look at it.
Okay.
Um, Melanie is gonna take that on, on, on. We're, we're gonna have to set up some workshops and work through it with all of you. So it was just basically to get it out to you tonight, and then we can start discussing it during those times.
It's also a very large document, Denise.
Yes.
Having some extra copies of it printed so that I don't have to be looking at a computer screen the whole time.
Yeah, I think I requested one from Sadie or something, so.
Uh, we will print those out and pop them in the mail to you. You'll probably get it sooner than if you stop by, so.
Thank you so much, Denise. I appreciate that.
And next I have the Planning One-on-One, Taylor Scampi. Scampi, sorry.
Hello.
How are you?
Good, how are you? Good to see you all. Happy New Year.
Yeah, you too.
Um, okay, I'm gonna go ahead and screen share here. Maybe. All right. Uh, you should now be able to see my screen.
Yep.
Okay, great. Um, yeah, so for those of you who don't know me yet, my name is Taylor. I'm the city planner here in Estacada. I've been with the city for a little over a year and a half now. And we figured this meeting would be a good opportunity. It's the first of the year to do a brief kind of intro to planning type session. Not just because we're welcoming some new counselors, but also looking at the new year. There's a lot going on, as you all know, in the city, lots of growth, kind of recent changes as of last March. With the creation of those six new zones, lots of inquiries and applications from the public and developers coming in for annexations and subdivisions. And then we're also going to beginning, going to be starting a couple of long-range planning projects. We have a grant to update our transportation system plan. And we'll also be having a full housing needs analysis done, which will have implications for housing policy and stuff like that. So all of these things affect and depend on decisions that you, the council, will be making. And so hopefully this brief, I'll try to be brief overview of kind of the planning process and our statewide contacts will be helpful as we get into that this year. So. Um, real quick, what I hope we can cover in today's brief spiel. I know that we, we won't be able to get into as much detail as might be, will eventually be needed. And you might have questions that I won't be able to answer. I don't know everything. So at the end of this, I've included some helpful links to more information on all of this stuff. And I can make sure that that gets sent out to all of you if desired. So yeah, we're gonna talk about the statewide planning program, our own local comprehensive plan and development code, how that stuff works and gets changed, local land use applications and decisions. And then the role of planning staff and how, how we're gonna interface. So briefly, the Oregon statewide planning program. Throughout the sixties, kind of growth and just changes in the market led to this increasing feeling among Oregonians that farmland, basically, was being lost to essentially sprawl. And people didn't want to end up looking like suburban California, basically. And so all of that kind of culminated in Senate Bill one hundred, which created the Land Conservation and Development Commission, LCDC. That's the decision-making body. And then the staff department that staffs for them is the Department of Land Conservation and Development. So there's those two acronyms that you'll see more of. They were charged with developing and adopting these statewide planning goals that everyone, all of the local jurisdictions, so cities and counties, have to comply with in their own comprehensive plans, which also was required by that Senate bill. And then LCDC looks at those proposed comprehensive plans and can approve or reject them. And so, yeah, the state agencies also are required to coordinate and comply with those adopted comprehensive plans. So the goals, the statewide goals that do apply to Estacada, there are actually nineteen total. But the last five are all related to, fifteen is related to the Willamette River Greenway, and then the last four are all coastal resources. So these fourteen are the ones that apply everywhere in the state, including in Estacada. And so those were all adopted in nineteen seventy-five. And then the following decade, basically, is about how long it took for the whole state to finally adopt and have their comprehensive plans acknowledged by LCDC. Estacada's comprehensive plan, I believe, was adopted in nineteen seventy-nine. And soon after acknowledged, it might have been nineteen eighty. Yeah, so it's a pretty old document. Um, so what it looks like is essentially we've got these state-level Oregon revised statutes and then statewide planning goals that inform the administrative rules that regulate and require what, what our comprehensive plan needs to look like. And the parameters within which we can develop that comprehensive plan. That document then comes down to the next level and informs our local ordinances. So that is things like the zoning ordinance, the development code. And all of these things come together to regulate our local decisions and how those decisions, the processes by which those decisions can get made. So. Let's look at our comprehensive plan. Um. What a comprehensive plan is, it's basically a series of general policy statements about what, what goals the city has for its future. And it's accompanied by a land use map. So that's our comprehensive plan map. Hours happens to be exactly the same as our, our zoning map. Sometimes they're a little bit different, but for the purpose of this presentation, we won't, we won't get into that. And so anyway, the, the comprehensive plan, it is basically this tool for the community to set its vision for what, what it wants its future to look like. So the text of that will describe our goals and policies. And also the data, the factual findings and projections that back up the creation of those goals and policies. And so then the comprehensive plan map is what we use to basically designate the locations where we want those future land uses to go. So, for example, residential uses, the community decides should go over here. Commercial uses might go in this area. Industrial uses should go over here, not near the residential uses, things like that. Um, so the statewide goals do help to define our options for creating those comprehensive plan goals. But really, the local goals and policies established in our comprehensive plan, that is what sets our agenda for the jurisdiction. So basically, the state, the state goals kind of set the minimum expectations of what we are required to do. And then the comp plan is our opportunity to take those basic goals and build on them to better reflect kind of Estacada's locally specific vision, needs, priorities. All of that has to be approved by the state. So any updates or amendments to our comprehensive plan or our development code has to go through DLCD. Some of the things that we have recently adopted, that updated parts of our comp plan, I've listed out here, ordinance twenty nineteen double oh five, that's what I mentioned. The council adopted in March of last year. The findings from the Economic Opportunity Analysis that informed that. And the Housing Memo, which was a preliminary housing needs analysis, but it wasn't complete. Those findings were then adopted into our comprehensive plan. So our comprehensive plan was updated using those findings in those chapters of the comp plan. Um. So yeah, um, so we've got a comprehensive plan that basically gives us these overarching goals and policies for the future. But then that gets implemented primarily through the ordinances that regulate land use and divisions. And so that's our development code, or also called the zoning ordinance, but we call it the development code here in Estacada. And so here's just a screen grab of what one of the code chapters looks, looks like. Um. Essentially, the development code tells you what land uses, what uses are allowed to occur in the different zones. And then what standards does the development have to follow if that use is established in the zone? So we're looking here at, this is the R two, which is medium density residential. So you can see we've got at the top, the use is permitted outright. That means you don't have to have any special land use application in order to establish, for example, a duplex in that zone. However, if you want to establish a multifamily dwelling, so apartments, you can see underneath the use is permitted outright. Multifamily dwellings are listed under the conditional uses. So if you want to put apartments in the R two medium density residential zone, you need to get a conditional use permit, which the planning commission would approve. Uh, the development code also will list uses that are prohibited in those zones. However, if a use is not listed anywhere in that chapter, that means that it is prohibited. But some things are listed explicitly as prohibited because we just wanted to be sure that everyone knows it's prohibited. So then at the bottom here, you can see standards for development. That section goes on farther down than the page would show. But it'll, it'll regulate things like minimum lot size and design standards, different things like that. So. Move on along. Oh, yes. So the other thing that the development code regulates is not just the uses and standards for development that can be allowed, but also the process that the city has to go through for different things to occur. So the development code regulates the application process for, or the approval process for a subdivision, for example, or an annexation. And we are gonna talk about that here. Um, so these are the different types of land use applications that we have here at the city. You'll see that some of these decisions require approval from the state level. So for example, annexations and zone changes require state acknowledgement. That's because those decisions actually amend the comprehensive plan map. So if you're, if you have a zone change, that's gonna change the designation that you see on the comp plan map. If you have an annexation, even if the annexation doesn't change the zoning designation that's on our comp plan map, it does change the line that delineates city limits. So both of those things are technically changes to the comprehensive plan map, which must be acknowledged by the state. So both of those require that state approval after the city council issues our local final approval. Um. However, things like subdivisions, a subdivision only goes to city, city council issues the final decision on a subdivision unless it's appealed. And actually, the bottom four on this list only go as high up as planning commission unless they're appealed. All of these decisions that are listed here can be appealed to the next higher-up decision-making body. So if the planning commission, for example, denies a variance application, that applicant or anyone else who wishes to appeal can then appeal that denial to the city council. The city council could then decide to confirm the denial or override the denial and actually approve it if they found that actually this application does meet all of the approval criteria. Um, same thing with decisions that are the city council's final decision. Those can be appealed and it goes to LUBA, L U B A, which is the Land Use Board of Appeals, which is essentially just a court system for land use specific issues. I won't say too much about that. And I don't, I'm not super well-versed in that. So that's something that also you'll find more information about in the links. Um, okay, so these, all of these types of, all of these applications, these decisions that are listed here are examples of quasi-judicial decisions. Meaning that you or the planning commission would be making a decision about the application based on pre-existing approval criteria that you're required to use when evaluating that proposal. So with a quasi-judicial decision, the approval criteria is already established. It's already adopted. Either because it is required by the state or because it was adopted into the development code by the city council. So that's where the quasi comes in, is that it's only, it's only partially judicial, right? It's not, it's not a fully subjective process. You're weighing a proposal, usually from an applicant, against already adopted established criteria. And that's different from legislative decisions, which are ones where usually the city, actually, I think always the city council is deciding to change some policy or regulation. And so, for example, any change to the text of the comprehensive plan, that would be a legislative decision. And similarly, any changes to the text of the development code would be legislative. And that's, and so unlike quasi-judicial decisions, legislative amendments would have to be initiated by the city council or the planning commission, by a decision-making body. Whereas with quasi-judicial decisions, which are usually land use applications, those can be initiated by anyone through the application process. Um, okay, so lastly, the role that planning staff plays in all of this, and that could be me. It could be our planners that we contract with at the county or any consultants that we're working with. Basically, the role of planners in all of these sort of public decision-making processes comes down to two kind of broad categories of planning work. And that's long range versus current planning. And so in long-range planning, you are looking at the long term. So usually it's a like twenty-year planning horizon. And you're identifying, you're working with the community to identify those longer-term goals and needs of Estacada through public engagement and data analysis. And then you're taking those findings, those goals and needs, and you're translating them into the comprehensive plan. and you're translating them into the comprehensive plan document and other long-term, long-range planning documents that the city adopts. Um, and then further distilling those goals and policies into the text of the development code, which implements those long-range plant, planning documents and plans, um, by regulating development and land use. Current planning, on the other hand, um, is more so processing permits and applications, so annexation, subdivision, et cetera. Um, building permits, sign permits, things like that, food cart licenses, all of these things that are that are regulated by the development code, um, but they are more situational or, um, you know, site-specific processes rather than, um, citywide policy changes and and the like. Um, and so there's that aspect of current planning and also just being kind of essentially doing customer service and and being the point person. Um, the contact for the public about what's allowed on a property, what's the process for getting a certain permit? Um, just information on zones and regulations and stuff like that. Um, and so throughout all of that, it's it's staff's job to basically administer the process. Staff reports, noticing, um, et cetera, provide the Planning Commission and City Council with relevant information and findings and, um, informing the public and assisting the public through these processes that can sometimes be, um, confusing for people who are not familiar with the legal side of stuff. Um, and coordinating between, um, other, not that we have many different departments here in Estacada, but, um, certainly across agencies, um, and different governmental levels. So that is in a nutshell, I think, um, yeah, I think that's, that's about it in a nutshell, and maybe is what we have time for today, assuming there might be some questions. Um, and then like I said, I've got some links here that I can send out or that I can have sent out to you guys. Um, that go into a lot more detail in case that is of interest, or if any of these things are um, things that we want to revisit at another time when we have some more time or regularly throughout the year, we can do that too. So, yeah.
All right. Well, thank you, Taylor.
Yeah.
Um, go back to the main screen here and see if we got some questions so I can see. All right. Well, you've heard planning and review. Uh, do we have any questions as to, uh, the, uh, stuff we just went over with planning, kind of giving you a broad look at how it all works? Uh, does anybody have any questions for Taylor? Am I seeing any? Oh, Paul? Yeah.
Uh, just curious from, uh, you'd have the twenty-year plan on there. Who who works on that long-range planning, Taylor? You you might hit it on there, but if you could touch on that again?
Yeah, well, it's a combination of, um, on staff, you know, city staff and, uh, whatever consultants are working on the different projects that inform the long-range plans. So, um, some examples of those long-range planning documents would be certainly the comprehensive plan. Um, but also, for example, our transportation system plan. That plan is developed with that twenty-year planning horizon in mind. Um, similarly, whenever we get this housing needs analysis done, those analyses are required by the state to, um, to project twenty years into the future. Um, when they're calculating the housing need in the city. Um, the urban growth boundary is intended to accommodate. Um, and the process for establishing or expanding that boundary, um, is it is intended to accommodate growth and development and need for the the twenty years out. Um, so anyway, who, sorry, more to your question of what you just asked, who, um, who does that work is it is a combination absolutely of, um, all of the different planning firms and planning staff that work on those documents. Um, so whenever we get our TSP update started, for example, this year, um, which we expect the, the request for proposals to probably be posted mid or late February. So we'll be starting that sometime in the spring. Um, that will be, most of the work on that will be done by consultants. Um, whichever consultant is selected for the project. That consultant will also probably subcontract with one or two other firms for some more specific, um, maybe technical analysis, um, things like that. So it's really a combination of, um, yeah, the local jurisdictions, actual planning staff here at the city, um, whoever we're working with at the county. And then whatever consultants are helping us with the project. Um, so that might not be a very satisfying answer because it's pretty convoluted and a lot of, a lot of people are involved in developing the the document for sure, but.
It's, that's great. I appreciate it. Thanks for the clarification there and, um, thanks for the overview as well, too.
Yeah.
Thank you, Taylor. That was very informative. Anybody else have any questions before we adjourn this meeting? All right, we thank you and we're going to adjourn. Oh, Joe, go ahead.
Just want to confirm, you did say you're gonna send us the, uh, that that slide, uh, slideshow and all the links are in there. I do a lot better reading stuff to try to retain it, so, thanks.
Okay, great. So I'm gonna adjourn the Estacada, uh, workshop.